Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for July 12, 2022. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees for the Michigan Zoning and Laboring Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to circuit court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium, address your comments to the board, and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the numbers of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but the comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. So I'd like to take attendance.
So noted.
And I'll need a motion from the board for approval of the minutes of June 14, 2022.
So moved.
And before I call the first case, I'd just like to...
Second, support.
Oh, I'm sorry, second. All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we get started, I'd just like to mention to the public that we have with us tonight, Carol Rosati, who very ably served as chair of the zoning board, and really happy to have her back as a substitute because of her years of experience and real judgment in balancing the differing interests that are presented. So with that, let's call the first appeal. Is the applicant ready? 3600 Bradway.
Good evening, council. Thank you very much for having us.
State your name and address.
Yes, my name is Jordan Jonah, 3600 Bradway. I also live, this is a proposed development here, and I live at 1774 Maplewood Avenue, also in the township. Tonight, I'm in front of you for three different requests. I am the crazy one that thought I could turn a school into a house. So this is a former Country Day School at Maple and Losser, just north of Maple Road on the east side of Losser. And with this development, it's a larger piece of land that sits between three roads, Tocco, Bradway, and also Losser, which does not give us ability to create a front yard with this property. So basically, excuse me, a rear yard. So basically, we're tucked in with three front-side yards. And in developing this, we did take a big portion of the building down already. And where the demo of the building was, one of the sections of the building, we are creating a rear yard. So this would be the front yard and the proposed backyard. The lot is very large, and in the backyard, we would like to construct a pool, upgrade the fronts from the chain-link fronts, and move it off of Losser Road into the property line so it's hidden with the evergreens that were recently planted that are not pictured here, and also build a pergola outside the backyard. Everything is very far away from any neighbors. I can yell at my kids as loud as I like and no one will hear me, and it's a very private and secure area. Losser is a fast-moving road. I do have little kids. The fence is important to us, of course, and also with the pool. I'm here for any comments or concerns.
Do we have any questions from the board? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Has anyone here liked to comment?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Weisenborn here, representing Bloomfield Village Association, 3595 Bradway. We're actually the closest neighbor to this project. So we felt like the conversion of the school into a private residence was a huge win for the village and also a win for the Jonah family. We reviewed this extensively over three months. We fully support the project itself, the hot tub inside the pool, the fence, and the pergola. They do meet our guidelines. The screening that is being, has been installed and will continue to be installed on this property is extensive, so nobody will see this, but they are harmonious anyway in terms of the way they are situated on the lot. So we do fully support this proposal.
Kathy, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this matter? I'll close the public hearing then. Jordan, I don't know if you need to respond to any of those comments, but is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, but I'm happy to answer. Any questions from the board?
Any other questions from the board? Any discussion or a motion?
I can make a motion. I just want to confirm one thing. So from the plan that we see, it looks like everything is screened, the pool, the fence, and everything else. Yeah, so if there's no comments or questions, I'm prepared to go ahead with the motion.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I'll start with the permission request. So with regard to the appeal at 3600 Bradway, I move that the appeal be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 because the location of the proposed pergola will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it is going to be fully screened and is some distance away from the neighboring properties. With regard to the dimensional variance at 3600 Bradway, I also move that those be approved for the fence, the pool, and the pergola. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome because of the unique nature of the lot and the frontage. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that all of these structures are going to be screened, and we have support here from the Neighborhood Association. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the unique shape of the lot and its location on Losser Road, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated. The only other thing I'll add is that all necessary permits should be made within one year and should be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Calling item number two, 873 North Cranbrook. You could step forward, state your name and address, and the need for the variance.
Hello, I'm Pamela Livingston-Harty. I'm here representing the homeowners Jared Gall and Carol and Kenny. We are asking for a variance for the generator and the second air conditioner. It's right on, it borders Oak. It's already pretty much covered with fancy and greens, but we will enhance the generator totally and enhance more where the second air conditioner is as well.
And then can you talk a little bit about the hot tub? There was a variance that I believe expired, so that's...
Yes, the hot tub situation happened quite a while ago. The homeowner got his approval from you, of course. He hired an electrician who was supposed to follow up with the permit and close the permit out. He installed it, the electrical not to code, and we're working on this major renovation, and we discovered, of course, that it's not to code. So we've upgraded the electrical component to the hot tub, and now we just need the reapproval for the hot tub.
Any other questions from the board? All right, then I'll open this for public comment. I would think, Kathy, you have some other feedback for us.
I do. With respect to the AC unit, that's right next to an existing unit, so this is the obvious place to put that particular one because this is secondary front yard, and you end up with the need for a dimensional variance. The generator, there is a hardship in that there is no other place on this property to put that generator on the side, on the rear. This is really the only location. The applicant has agreed to screen it extensively close to the generator and the AC unit, so the neighbors across Oak and also the passersby on Oak will not see the unit. So our board did approve this and recommend that you grant the variances. We also approved the hot tub, I think, in 2021, and we continue to support approval of that. Our requirements were that they would, both the AC units and the generator, would be screened with evergreen screening, at least the height of the unit maintained in healthy condition.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? All right, I'll close the public hearing.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? All right, then are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start with the permission request in regards to the appeal at 873 North Cranbrook Road. From the permission request, I move that the request be approved as submitted for the proposed hot tub. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible and is also appropriate for the neighborhood, as such a hot tub is something that is very common. Thank you. In regards to the dimension variance, I also move that that be approved for the repeal at the same address at 873 North Cranbrook Road. I move that the dimensional variance be approved for, can you hear me? Oh, for the generator as, it's just for the generator, isn't it? Be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, basically because it would prevent reasonable use of the property if it was located in another area. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it will be screened, and that is the agreement. The unique circumstances of the property with having multiple frontages, and because of that, it is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Just making sure that additional evergreens screening for the generator is required, as well for the hot tub to be screened from public view, and this may also require additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the unit. And they must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted. Calling the next item, item three, 235 Hamilton. The applicant could come forward, name and address, and the need for the variance.
Good evening. Brian Nieper, 750 Hup Cross. I'm the architect for Casey and Kim Forrester. We're in front of you tonight for an existing non-conforming structure. The home was built closer to the front and the side than what's allowed today, and we've got a couple real modest front setback projections, one at the front porch and one at the garage. We're just kind of bumping out the front porch a bit to bring it in line with the existing cantilever on the front, as well as kind of straightening out, bumping out the garage a little bit to bring that in line with the existing library wall. All this, our main design goal is to add a master suite above the garage, and that existing garage location is, you know, too close to the street in the front and too close to the side as it was built. So we're basically here based on the existing conditions.
So it's the garage that's going to be extended out into that yellow area, and then you're extending the home above the garage?
We're basically building on top of where the existing garage was.
Okay.
Just a couple 16-inch small additions towards the front, the more architectural features to give a fresh look to the front elevation.
Okay.
So the garage itself, what's shown in yellow, it's in, you're adding that encroachment or that encroachment is going to be because of the second floor?
Because of the second floor.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't understand that. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public. I would think Kathy has comments about this one.
This proposal is a beautiful renovation of an existing colonial. As Brian indicated, it's existing non-conforming. We felt bringing that porch forward is a really nice architecturally and adds to the aesthetic of the front of the house. All three of the variances we support in order to allow the homeowners to have the use that they desire out of their home and to be able to do this beautiful renovation. I'm speaking on behalf of the association when I say that. I'm also a neighbor to this property, and I fully support this as a neighbor.
So a two-pronged set of feedback.
That's two yes votes.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. In regards to the dimensional variance appeal at 355 Hamilton Road, for the dimensional variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented and tied to the drawings, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards of practical difficulty because strict compliance with the letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the existing location of the house being non-conforming on the lot. There's no injustice to the neighbors due to the relatively modest additions to what they are used to seeing right now, and it is not self-created, again, due to its prior condition on the lot. Should the motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction, and I don't expect any additional evergreens to be needed, and the house does look lovely.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item four, 623 Ardmore. You could state your name and address and the need for the variance.
Good evening. Matt Moser, representing the homeowners at 623 Ardmore. Simple request, just a small pergola in the back of the home. Everything is within 16 feet of the property line. The current property has evergreen screening, and I don't think I'll have anything more to say. I'll answer any questions.
So Matt, on that drawing, are those trees that are pictured in it additional trees or existing?
There's a large evergreen hedge that already exists around the property.
I saw that from the pictures. Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public, come on here from Kathy again.
The pergola in this case meets architectural guidelines. It's well proportioned to the house. It is harmonious with the neighborhood, and the existing screening and the additional landscaping that they're planning to do will fully screen this. So we support the permission request.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion.
Wonderful.
With regard to the appeal at 623 Ardmore Drive for the accessory structure, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it is going to be fully screened. All permits for this should be made within one year and should be obtained prior to construction, and the pergola has to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens.
Report.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item five, 6753 Cathedral. You could step forward, state your name and address, and the need for the variance.
Good evening. Michael Walk, I'm the architect for the homeowner, Patrick Lane. Hi. And we have a simple request of a six-foot by 14-foot open front porch, it's a covered front porch at the front of the house. The existing house has a 40-foot setback, and we're encroaching six feet into the required front yard, and we feel that it will really enhance this rather plain house. There's a lot of similar additions in the neighborhood, also a lot of similar homes, and the homeowner does plan to make an addition to this house, approximately 900 square feet in the rear that does comply, and we're not asking for a request there. But the addition of the front porch will enhance the house. We plan on renovating the front of it as well, so it's all part of a larger plan, and we respectfully request this.
Any questions from the board?
Is there much of a cover over the front door now?
I'm sorry?
Is there much of a porch or cover over the front door now?
No. There's a slight overhang of the second floor over the, the second floor overhangs the first floor by about a foot and a half.
All right, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this agenda item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Very good. Thank you.
For the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 6753 Cathedral Drive, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standard for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, and because without such a porch, it prevents the reasonable use of the property, and it'd be nice to have a nice porch and overhang. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Is it consistent with other homes in the area? The unique circumstances of the property being that the existing floor plan has some limitations if you wanted to put any additional front accessories, and this is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item six, 3530 Losser Road.
Matt Moser, representing the homeowners at 3530 Losser Road. This is part of a major landscape renovation that we've designed. There's currently existing piers and a gate on the north entrance of the drive. We have now added a second entry to the property that centers off the front door. The architecture of the piers is in line with what exists today, as well as the gate. Therefore, we're mimicking the architecture. This is on Losser, which is a heavily trafficked road, and I think as many of you know, most of the estates on Losser are gated, so we're doing this to be in keeping with that security and aesthetics. Happy to answer any questions you have.
So the front gate, the starting, so it's sort of, there's a curvature, the base part of the gate there on the far left, what's the height of that?
You're talking about the gate itself?
Yes.
So the current gates are...
Because it rises up to six feet in the middle.
Right. The current, so it matches the existing gate, which is the exact same height. So it's basically in the center of the existing gate is a six-foot gate, so that's what we're proposing to match.
Okay.
And the piers are six feet, and that matches the existing as well?
The piers are actually, I don't know if it's noted differently, but they're five feet tall.
Yeah, that isn't really drawn to scale there, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, sorry about that, but...
That's okay.
Yeah, so just to match, and this property's heavily screened from the street anyway, so really aren't going to see it.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here that'd like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
You know how I love piers.
Yeah, you love piers, yes.
Okay, with respect to the application at 3530 Losser Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the driveway gates, non-illuminated piers, and landscape walls because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The structures are compatible, appropriate, and harmonious with what is in the area. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance for the structures that so noted. It would not, I haven't looked at these for a while. Simply based on the size of the lot and the nature, the use, and the surrounding properties, the proposed gates are compatible. Compliance with the ordinance, the strict letter of the ordinance, would not do justice to the applicant. Because it is similar to the surrounding properties, there's no injustice to the surrounding property owners, and it's not self-created. If this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction, and a hold harmless must be filed with the township for the gates.
Second.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
I'm actually up for the next one, too.
Okay.
All right. Matt Moser, representing the homeowners at 6,000 Snowshoe Circle. This one came before you, I don't know, maybe about a year ago. We had the sports court behind where it is showing there. We have made it smaller. We've moved it to the north end of the rear yard in the landscape plan. You'll also see that we added evergreen screening all on the northeast side.
Could you highlight that with a pointer?
Absolutely.
The screening that's been added?
It's not, this is the site plan, but there's a landscape plan, might be another slide, but, slide, but right, I guess it didn't make it. I've got it right here, but where the new one is right here, this is fully screened with evergreens along this whole fence in the new plan.
Wait a minute, so can we see the slide with the...
Their proposal plan, this is...
Yes, so show it.
This whole fence is now completely being proposed to be screened with evergreens.
Okay.
So basically, you've cut the size in half from what we approved before?
Right.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
With respect to the property located at 6,000 Snowshoe Circle, I would move to grant the permission request because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7 standards. The proposed sports court is compatible with the surrounding area. The structure's appropriate. It will not hinder adjacent properties, and it's harmonious. I would also note that the ZBA addressed this before, and the applicant has in fact reduced the size of the structure approved before by 50%. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance for the proposed fencing exceeding six, or four feet in height, and for the accessory structure to be located in the side yard due to, could you go back to the other site? Based on the shape of the property with the curvature and the way the house is laid on the property, that creates a practical difficulty for placing of the structure. This would be compatible with surrounding properties and would not be inappropriate for the neighborhood, and it's not self-created. If this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. The plan proposes to have evergreen screening to screen the sports court, and that would be part of the approval as well, and the use of the sports court will be limited to daylight hours since there will be no lighting of the sports court.
Support.
I motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted. Calling the next item, item eight, 1835 Spring Grove Road.
Hello, my name is Megan Enzer. I'm here with Cody Dankie. We're the homeowners at 1835 Spring Grove. We're looking for approval of a full perimeter rear yard fence at our home. The immediate use is for dog containment for our 20-pound Shih Tzu. It's also for the safety of the children in our family, as well as in preparation for a pool to come later. We have approval from the Hampton Hills Homeowners Association since December. We've also personally informed our direct neighbors at 1821 and 1847 Spring Grove Road, as well as 1824 and 1836 Hickory Bark Lane in May and June of this year. We've received no opposition from these immediate neighbors. The Hampton Hills subdivision has fences in no fewer than seven other residences, three of them without a pool. I have a list of those addresses if they're needed for reference. Please let us know of any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Do you have any type of landscape plan?
Not at this point, as our neighbors do not have that either.
And you're proposing what type of fence?
It's a four-foot-high black aluminum fence.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
So I'll open this item to the public. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on this item? on this item? Close this item then, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion? So we have a black fence?
Well, do we normally require screening around a fence, and if it's right on the property line, how do you screen? That's just a conversation question?
Yes. And so sort of the interesting thing is, because there's a dog involved, we, we have have this before us, and it's a black aluminum fence, so.
Yeah, this, this is a little-
Aesthetically, it's not a solid wood fence, so I think it's, I think it's aesthetically pleasing.
It's four-foot high, too.
And it's four-foot high.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it, too, because this neighborhood's a little bit different from some of the neighborhoods we've dealt with before in terms of it's pretty wide open, and I think just putting up the fence would still keep that illusion of it being wide open. That's sort of my thoughts on it.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. The black fences, you actually see through.
Right.
A white fence is more, um, visual.
And every case stands on its own, so, you know, your neighbors are, we, we look at every case individually, so that's why we're balancing these different interests. So I, I don't have a problem with it personally, but I, I don't make the motion, so I just run the meeting.
Yeah, if you want to.
No, you'd have to switch spots with me, which, you know, you retired. Remember that big retirement package you got we can't file?
Oh, I miss that. Alright, with regard to the property at 1835 Spring Grove Road, I would move to grant the permission request for the dog containment fence because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. A fence is compatible with, appropriate in the neighborhood, and will not hinder the adjacent properties, and is harmonious to a residential district. I would also move to grant the dimensional variance. Again, what makes this situation unique is the fact that they have a dog. If they did not have a dog, they'd simply be putting this fence up, and I think under all the circumstances and based upon the property and the adjacent properties, the request is appropriate and compatible with surrounding properties, and I believe that it is not self-created. For that reason, I would say if the motion is approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Now, we typically require some additional screening. We actually require that the fence be totally screened as a, as a general rule, but I think in this circumstance, although I'd like to see you maybe put in a, some trees here and there, I think the neighborhood overall is wide open and, and sort of, I would not require the screening to keep that same feel in the area. If that makes sense.
Support?
So a motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling the next item. Item nine, 5855 Raven.
I'm Bill Pham, the homeowner.
Okay.
This is simply a generator installation. The issue is that it really can't go in the back because we have an addition with a crawl space underneath, and we need to have, I think it's 50-some inches from any venting into the basement, so it's really got to go on the side. I had two different contractors come out independently, didn't talk to them at all. They both selected this spot for the generator. It is close to the, the current gas service.
And what's, the screening is a brick wall?
Excuse me?
Is, the, the screening is a brick wall?
You know, the, the letter that I, that I received back from the township, I think got things a little bit confused. It talks about two air conditioners and it's one generator. I think I probably put in there, I would put screening in however it needs to be, brick or foliage.
Okay.
Whatever's required. I would probably prefer the foliage.
That's a great comment to us. We like that, where we have options with foliage or a brick wall.
Yeah, I mean, I'd probably prefer the, the foliage.
Okay, alright.
For easy use, and then, you know.
I understand you have to screen it.
I do, I understand it's got to be screened.
Alright.
Other than that, it's, uh, the house is 16 and a half feet from the lot line as is, so anything along the side of the house is going to encroach.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this then to the public. Anyone here that would like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion. In regard to the appeal at 5855 Raven Road for the dimensional variance, I move the, the variance be approved as requested. Based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the, where the gas hookup is located on the home, and also the venting issues with the crawl space. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because we're going to request that this be screened from view from your neighbors. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the gas hookup and crawl space issues, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All permits for this should be made within one year and have to be obtained prior to installation, and as discussed, you will have to have this fully screened with evergreens 12 months out of the year.
Very good.
Support?
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
We're calling the next item, item 10, 3624 Maxwell Court. State your name and address.
I'm Randy Hike with Action Fence of Michigan on Arroy Look. I'm representing the Biglemans. Sharon is here. What we're trying to do is a dog fence. As the drawing shows, there's two sides already. The right side, the property line is already fenced from the neighbor's side. The back is actually a wire fence. It's, it's in poor condition, but it's going to work to keep the dog in. And on the left side, we're not actually going to the property line, we're going a few feet inside of the property line, inside of the arborvitae that the neighbor will see.
So, so I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is important, is, you know, there's, there's a lot of screening on this lot, and the fence is going to be inside that.
There's inside of the screening on the left side, however, on the right side, the screening is actually inside of the property line. See what I mean? See where it's drawn?
Yes.
And that's right at the neighbor's driveway, like, literally, it's right there. So the only thing looking at that fence is the guy's garage door.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for that. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem at all. And then, at the end of the, this fence is right at the end of their driveway, so screening it from the front would be difficult because you're now putting screening right where you're going to plow snow.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on this fence? I'll open the public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to speak on this item? You could come forward and state your name and address, and give us your feedback.
My name is Dennis Packey, occupant of 3600 Maxwell Court. Been occupying that space for 44 years, and our question is, not a question, but our concern is, is that that's not the lot line, okay? The lot line comes off at an angle, and to the course where our fence was, there were arborvitae to that point. In the last few months, they've added two and then two more arborvitae to extend out, you know, down the driveway, which actually is not a straight line, okay, from that fence that comes out. So part of those arborvitae are actually on our property. Our question is, is that I don't have a problem with them having something to contain their dogs. We had dogs for 28 years, and that's why we got our fence initially. But the question is, is the length of the fence along the driveway, it doesn't need to be as far as, as far out as it is. There isn't that much space between the side of their house and the driveway itself. I don't know what that 16-foot setback is.
So could you take a pointer and sort of show the, show the area you're-
Okay, well, this is our fence line here, okay? And the, the lot line does not go straight down. It comes out, okay, down to the street. And at the end of the, the street there, there's a fire hydrant and a, a line as far as for the, the sewer, so it isn't, it isn't a straight perpendicular line there, okay? And, you know, I, I could see that as far as, if you could go back to the other picture there. Yeah, that, you know, I don't know if they, if they have a fence from here to here, okay, wouldn't really as much have a problem with that, or even as far as just to carry it a little further in here, so that it wouldn't extend as far down, you know, our driveway.
So is your objection, is you, you feel the fence as located is on your property, and you would want it to take a different angle?
Right.
I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what, I'm trying to dispel your-
Well, you can have surveyors come out and check, and, you know, we've got the pictures here that show that, excuse me, that the, line is not a, a straight line, but.
So if the fence were inside of those arborvitae that were planted there, would that?
Does that solve it?
Well, of course, I, I don't think the property owner would want the arborvitae on the outside of the, you know, of the fence.
Well, that's-
Well, we could.
Do require that a lot of times.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
That or no fence.
Yeah, so.
That, that could be a condition of our approval.
So that was our concern.
Okay.
So the dimensions, it's coming forward is approximately 11 feet according to their diagram. Is that the dimension you're objecting to?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be 11 feet, you know? And, and again, as far as those arborvitae that extend it to that length were just planted.
Got it. Okay.
They weren't there before.
Gotcha. Okay. Thanks very much.
I'm sorry, one last question, and that's your driveway side?
Yes.
Yeah, do you have any windows that look out?
No, we've got a three-car garage along the side there.
Alright, thanks very-
Technically, as far as backing out of the one garage, you know, I don't think we'd run into it, okay, but, uh, could be an issue. Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Alright, they'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it back to the applicant to respond to the comments.
We don't put a fence, I mean, we tell them where to put it, and if there's any kind of issue, we'll have a survey done, so we make sure that the fence is, you know, exactly on the line or inside of the line. And I, I don't know of any new arb's planted in the meantime, but I think whatever we have to do to put it on the property, even if we've got to move an arb, we'll move an arb. It is what it is.
Okay, well, it's, it sounds like the neighbor disagrees with where the property line is, so you, you're saying you're offering to do a survey?
Correct.
And make sure that the fence is on the, and we'd have to postpone then? We'd come back with the survey, and you'd show the neighbor?
Well, what I would do is have the survey done prior to installation of the fence, and I can go from there. Because any time I have a dispute with the neighbor, I always have a survey done.
Okay.
Because it's just not something I want to go back and fix.
Well, let me, it is not uncommon that we require fences to be screened from public view, which means the screening goes on the outside of the fence.
Sure.
Alright, so if there is, in my mind, a dispute on that 11 feet, on exactly where that property line goes, I would assume if you move the fence on the other side, the inside of the arborvitae, that that would resolve that issue.
Correct.
And it'd probably be aesthetically nicer for the neighbor because they're going to see the trees instead of the fence.
I understand, yeah. And I don't think they have any issue, I mean, I could ask right now if they had any issue with putting it inside of the arb's and just tucking them tight to it.
Go ahead, see, see if that, is that okay, or, you want to do the survey, or? So I'm, I'm sorry we closed the public hearing.
They would rather keep it on the property line.
Okay.
Again, but I don't want that to be the, the deal breaker either.
Well, it's not, not a deal breaker, but it's a condition that we, it's, it's an issue that we have to address.
Certainly.
And, and you just said you don't like to do work where there's a dispute with the neighbor, so.
No, no, what I mean is, I don't, I don't, I do work with a dispute with the neighbor every day, so what I'd like to do is make sure that there's, the property line is clear and defined every time we do work, and if there's a question about that property line, I make sure it's clear and defined before we move forward.
Okay.
I'm still not clear. I have a question, perhaps it's for the neighbor. I got the impression he wanted to move this part back.
He wants it back.
Not this part over.
Right, right. He wants to move it back.
So, you know, maybe if he finds his property line, are you willing to go off the back corner of your house?
Yeah, definitely.
See how it's, it looks like it lines up on either side, but my sense was he didn't like how far it was coming forward.
Right.
Correct.
So if it came into the corner of the house, still went to your verified lot line?
Yeah, I don't think that would be an issue, and I don't really think it's that, I mean, the, the drawing shows what it looks like to be, you know, a couple feet, but in reality, that might be this far. If I could move it back that far, it's one arborvitae.
These drawings are very difficult to understand, the context of where his driveway is.
Right.
The lot line.
Well, the problem is, too, the drawings are straight, and the property line isn't.
Right.
Correct.
From on that one aerial, the property line doesn't look that divergent, but how do we?
Right, there is a slight-
There's a slight.
-angle to it that you can see, although that could be inaccurate, too. Might be more, might be less.
I have a file from the permit packet that we sent to the city, that you can kind of see where the property line is, drawn, and where the actual driveway is for the neighbor.
So I guess, we can do a couple things. We could, we could postpone this, and, or, you know, we could, we could actually have them talk to the neighbor and say, hey, this is where we propose to put it, or, but I, I think we don't have enough information now to get the fence in the right spot.
Unless we move it.
Unless, unless, unless we move it in. We could just do that.
Oh, yeah, that's a steeper angle than it looked, yeah.
And I agree, my drawing is quick and dirty.
Yep.
For the-
This is more helpful, understanding where they're at.
Exactly. This is my permit packet. Now, you can see there's an angle, there's, there's definitely an angle to the line.
The picture behind you, Brian is actually a lot clearer.
Yeah. It's showing up better up here.
Oh, yeah.
Now, you can see that's an angle. Rhombus. Is that what it is, a rhombus? Instead of a square. Yeah, because that, you can see there's- Basically, I think my fence just went past where the arborvitae stopped, and I returned in, and there's a downspout right there. So moving it back, I'll probably have to duck it between a couple arborvitae, but I don't think that'll be an issue.
And come to the corner of your house and alleviate maybe half of-
Right, it's going to be probably four feet.
But they're not liking it right now.
Corner of their house, the end of the neighbor's driveway.
Right.
Straight across there.
Yeah, we can't, you know, predict which they would want to, yeah, another one is to come off the neighbor's driveway and into your house perpendicular, so you have to tell us what you want to do.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I'm, we're very willing to back that fence up to, it's going to be roughly probably nine feet or eight feet on the neighbor's side, and then bring that to the back corner of the house. I don't think that's any issue whatsoever.
Okay.
I think that solves the issue.
Alright, then I think, I think we can make a motion.
Great.
Someone have a motion then, based on that?
I guess I'd better do it.
Offer from the applicant. Okay?
Okay.
Because you're the architect, I do-
Oh, don't tell them that.
This is a line that you would be drawing.
Are we on Raven? No, we're on Maxwell Court.
You're a linear thinker.
I, I would like to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance in regard to the appeal at 3624 Maxwell Court for the proposed fence at the height that we're talking about be approved as long as they jog it back to come somewhere closer to the, off the back of their garage, and locate the exact property line prior to installation. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards of practical difficulty due to the shape of the lot and the need for an animal containment fence, and, and an appropriate place to terminate it, and strict compliance with the letter of the law would be unduly burdensome. There is hopefully no injustice to the adjoining neighbor due to the adjustments we're talking about, and also it is their driveway side. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, and this is not self-created. Should the motion be approved, all per, all necessary permits must be made within one year, and construction cannot permits prior to receiving those. The screening should be also to existing, the height of the proposed fence.
Support?
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, your request as modified is granted. Thank you, guys. Calling the next item. Item 11, 3746 Maple.
Yep, I'm David Calucci, I'm the homeowner at 3746 Maple. I'm looking to put a, install a very minimalist pergola on an existing concrete patio on the back of my house.
Sorry, the court can see the plants behind you, I'm not sure what's going on.
Uh-oh, something's going on.
Is it this?
We've got him.
This is where you need a second grade teacher.
I'd like to have it installed, I'm going to install it because I'm really getting tired of worrying if my umbrella's going to blow away. So it's a very simple structure, it's similar aesthetically to a deck that I have on the back of my house, simple white frame with a mesh top, and it, trying to have it be as minimalist as possible so I can, it won't obscure my view of the golf course in the back.
So you don't have any screening planned, you want to...
I don't have any screening planned, and you can see on the shot viewing toward the east, my neighbor has a lower grade than me, and I don't have any evergreens planned, and if I were to put evergreens up, it would actually obscure their view of the golf course.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Oh, and on the west side, there is, there is trees.
So I'll open this up to the public, anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
In regard to the appeal at 3746 West Maple, for accessory structure, I move the request to be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure is in the rear yard and it meets all the setbacks that currently exist. If approved, the applicant, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the pergola from public view.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion?
I think maybe we might want to consider not having screening, I don't know what the preference is.
I don't think you can really need it.
Yeah, no screening.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it needs it, I'm kind of familiar with the site there. I think what the applicant indicated is true, so...
Okay, so we had to amend the motion without landscaping?
Yeah, so we have, so we have to make, can we just do that without amending?
Yes, as long as it's in census.
All right, I think a sensible approach this evening is good. So, we have a motion and a second, which does not include any additional screening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you much.
Any questions to request a screen?
All right, back again. Matt Mosher, representing the homeowners at 1583 Clarndon Road. This is one of the remaining beautiful English Tudor estates that exists in the township here, and we've been tasked to continue to improve its beauty and preserve its history. The request for you guys tonight are some entrance, 48-inch entrance piers with some low wing walls, what you don't see on here is the really pretty pillowed boxwoods and things that'll go around them. This is totally in keeping with what's on this property, there's some absolutely gorgeous old brick and stucco walls, and so we're just trying to enhance the entrance to carry the architecture from the house out. These type of features are quite common on many of the estates in the township, so I think the request is reasonable, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And the height of the piers, five feet?
Four.
Four feet? Okay, any other questions from the board? I'll open this up to the public, anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll start with the permission request first in regards to the appeal at 1583 Clarndon Road for the accessory structure of a landscape wall and non-illuminated piers. I move that the request be approved and submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure as well as the location of the accessory structure will be appropriate for the neighborhood as well as harmonious, and it will add a lot of aesthetic to the property. And in terms of the dimensional variance, I also move that that be approved as requested for the proposed accessory structure located in the front yard. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Basically, it would actually, the accessory structure is going to add a lot of aesthetic for, and it goes along with the property in the design. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. Again, it will be consistent with other homes in the area. Unique circumstances with the property, because the accessory structure will enhance the front, that's why the variance is needed, and that's something slightly unique, and this is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, guys.
Calling item 13, 3636 Middlebury.
Yes, good evening, my name is Kevin Hart, I'm the architect for the project, my address is 700 East Maple, Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. What you have before you this evening is a, an austere portion of this project of the home, the Drazen family is planning a fairly substantial addition, and they wanted to create a protected opening at the front of the house. Right now, there's like a two-foot, three-inch overhang, as you can see, viewing to the north. It has afternoon sun, but in the wintertime, this gets a lot of ice and snow pile up at this location with the style of the home and the way the property is positioned. So we were planning to build on top of the existing slab that is roughly five foot, three inches wide from, towards the street and 18 foot, five inches long. The portico that goes over that slab will only be eight foot, seven by five foot, three, and we thought that that was in scale, and it pretty much accomplished the safety issues. This was reviewed by the Westchester Village Homeowners Association, and they approved it, and we asked for relief for this three-foot encroachment.
Thanks very much, any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public, anyone like to speak on this item? You could step forward, state your name and address.
I'm Mike Smith from the Architectural Control Committee of Westchester Village Homeowners Association. We did indeed receive an application from the Drazens for their project, and we did review it. I want to add, though, that in addition to the porch that's been mentioned, which is just a very small segment of their project, there's a rather expansive addition on the back inside of their house as well as a extension of their garage, eight-foot extension to the north of their garage. We did, the committee did review the plans quite extensively, and because of the size of the project and concern about some drainage issues that might arise as a result of this project, they did agree to do a modification and improve the drainage, excuse me, in the back part of the lot.
But the only thing we're talking about tonight is the...
Right, I'm just saying this is the whole project.
Okay.
And we did finally approve it as he stated then.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion in regard to the appeal at 3636 Middlebury for the variance requested for a front-covered porch encroaching into the required front setback. I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, strict compliance with the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the existing placement of the house did not leave any space for the, really the safety of a covered porch. There's no injustice to the neighbors by reason of the association's approval and the neighbors', and it is not self-created. Should the variance be approved, all permits must be pulled within one year, and all work should not be started without a permit.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Kevin, your request is granted. Calling the next item. Item 14, 2434 Breton Avenue, state your name and address.
My name's AJ Shimami, I'm the homeowner for 2434 Breton Avenue. I'm looking for a variance request for, to build a shed in the back right corner of my lot. The reason being is that where the existing sprinkler system is, through trial and error, I found that that location was actually free of any lines or heads, so I kind of want to avoid having to dig up anything because I intend to pour the foundation with a rat well. And then obviously to screen off the sides that are adjacent to my neighbors. If there's any questions?
Any questions from the board?
So you're saying that you have to encroach the eight feet because of the sprinklers?
From, I mean, from where I tested, yeah, I hit, I hit lines and had to come and get it fixed, so I ended up like finalizing on that kind of location based on the trial and error.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing for this item, anyone that would like to speak on it? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for further questions or discussion or a motion.
I have a similar question, there's a shed on your neighbor's property, is it that far back as well?
Yeah, it's pretty much, pretty much in the same location that I'm looking to do, so...
I'd be more persuaded that they kind of belong together than that you can't move a sprinkler head if you need to, so...
And what's the, what's the screening you've got?
Right now, I'm going to, I'll, I can put evergreens or whatever, I'm open to any kind of screening, I just...
Okay, that's a great piece of information.
Yeah, whatever you guys need.
Okay.
Is it common to put the concrete slab? I don't know that I've ever heard of that before.
Some people do.
It's the best way of doing it. Oh, it is, okay. If that's what the architect says, then that's the best way to do it.
So we have that from the architect, and then he said he's open to any screening that you would want to put in your motion.
He's going to get it.
Yeah, okay, I think we're ready for a motion, team.
With regard to the property at 2434 Breton Avenue, I would move to approve the permission request because the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The, I'm losing all my stuff here. The proposed shed is compatible with the adjoining properties that in fact is located in a similar location as the adjacent property. It's appropriate for the neighborhood, and it's not going to hinder the adjacent property. I'd also move to grant the dimensional variance because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome based upon not really so much the existence of the sprinkler system, but it seems to be the most appropriate location based upon the location of the neighbor's shed and the fact that it's tucking it more back into the trees a little bit. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbor, and it's not self-created. If granted, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and additional evergreen plantings will be required to screen the shed from public view. Support.
I have a motion in support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 15, 2653 Berry.
Dog fences today.
Good evening, this is Vishal Anshaya, the homeowner of 2653 Berry Drive. We would like to install a four-foot vinyl fence for the dog containment. We have children, and we have two dogs, so for that, we are seeking approval for the fence on the backyard.
And are you absolutely committed to the white color? Could it be a darker color?
That's because it will look good with our house, that is actually more white, that is why we picked the white color, otherwise, it's not a constraint for us.
Okay.
So if you were going to keep it white, how do you feel about screening it with trees so that your neighbors can't see the white fence?
So it's basically, it's an, inside, the fence is inside the area, it's not boundary.
Right, so you would have to move it in just a little bit so you'd have enough space to plant trees around the outside?
Yes.
Well, how do you feel about doing that?
Actually, we already have trees in the backside, so it will come inside the fence, so we have a lot of trees on the backside.
So what you're saying is that from the, from the back, there's already trees that would hide the fence?
Yes.
Okay, but what about on the other sides?
Other sides...
Other sides are open.
Other sides are open to neighbors, and I don't think so they will have any problem.
Could you put trees?
We can, if we would have to.
Yeah, there are some trees, yes, and we have some vegetable garden on that side, and the other side is, there are some small trees.
So it is partially covered with trees, the backyard sideways?
I do believe, do we have the site plan drawing, your drawing shows it right on the property line all the way around.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Yeah, he's not going to be, he's going to have to move it to screen it.
Right.
Okay.
Or a different color would help, like black.
We can go for both. If screening fails, then we will change the color.
Oh, well, that's another good piece of information, thank you, that helps us. You're really helping the meeting. Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing, does anyone like to comment on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back, so we have two pieces of information from the applicant open to screening and changing the color, so very helpful feedback, thank you.
So do you have an active association, did anybody need to approve this, and do they have a fence requirement?
As we told, we contacted Home Depot, and they told us this is the only approval we need, so we are not...
Home Depot is not a good source of information for things like this hearing.
But in our neighbor, we have a lot of neighbors, they have the fence installed, and they do have the dogs, but though they have a six feet, but we are considering only four feet because of the neighborhood we are, and we have the fence like on my backyard, so it doesn't look good, we go for the six feet or something like that, so that, we don't want to cover everything. We just want something, because there are some occasions when we open the backyard door, our dogs immediately run out. Yeah, we understand, understand the need here. And then we were like in deep feeling that they won't harm anyone, so...
Are there very many fences in your neighborhood?
Yes.
Other than pool containments?
Yes, they do.
But I think we have enough information to make a motion here, so we could change the color potentially and require some, in order for him to screen it, he would have to move it off the property. So those are kind of the options, as I see it. And the homeowners offer that, right? You said changing the color would be okay?
Yeah, we can do that.
Very helpful, really appreciate that. Open-minded. Open-minded applicants.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Okay, great.
In regard to the appeal at 2653 Berry, I'll make a motion to approve the permission request for the fact of the fence as submitted, be approved in a darker color, one of the darker colors that isn't as visibly offensive, which would be more compatible with the existing neighborhood. The height is approved as it is and, and that, and the, the style and design are compatible with the neighborhood and harmonious with the neighborhood. Regarding the dimensional variance, I'll make a motion to approve the dimensional variance, again at the same address, based on the drawings submitted. Dimensional variance to be on the property line if it is the darker color and should they choose to move it, do a white color to move it in, or, I don't know how to state it.
No, you just identify what you're approving, not necessarily with an option?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I'd stick with the darker color.
So the variance is approved with the dark color.
Black.
There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the accommodation of the lightly, the dark colored fence and the unique circumstances of requiring dog containment. Should this motion be approved, all necessary permits must be pulled within one year and permits must be pulled prior to commencing construction, and we won't require screening on the dark color.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request as modified is granted.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next item, item 16, 7455 Wellborn Court.
Good evening. How's it going? This is the third design for the garage.
Your name and address?
Oh, Niranj Bhagat, 7455 Wellborn Court. It was approved in May of 2020 through the board and couldn't find a contractor, design changed for May of 2021, couldn't find a contractor, and finally found a contractor who made some adjustments to make it easier and more buildable. My variance request is 16 additional square feet from what's already approved. It doesn't, the 16 square feet are no closer to the neighbor on the, the two neighbors on the west side or the south side, so that's what I'm seeking.
Any questions from the board? So very unusual shaped lot.
Yeah.
Familiar with it?
Yeah, and the, the proposed garage is going over what's currently a driveway, so I'm not even, you know, we're not, we're not disturbing the property as far as the grass or the, the trees or anything like that, so.
So I'll open the public hearing, is anyone that would like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion. So it's really similar request that we granted before because of the variances through the ratio to the floor area of the main residence, and it's a bit bigger.
With respect to the property located at 7455 Wellborn Court, I would move to approve the request for a dimensional variance for accessory spe- space exceeding one half of the ground floor area of the main building because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be burdensome based upon the unique shape of the lot in relationship to the home on that unique shape. In addition, what is being proposed will not actually take up more impervious, impervious space on the property because they'll be utilizing portions of the existing driveway for that. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, it will not be encroaching any more than the existing building does at this stage, and the unique circumstances are established by virtue of the shape of that lot, and it's not self-created. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed for a contract. Calling the next item, item 17, 5080 Two More.
Hello, my name's Alex Liansean, I'm here representing the owner of 5082 Two More, looking to install a four foot tall black aluminum fence in the secondary front yard going back towards Timberlake Road. These are all really, really big lots with a ton of trees. Everybody pretty much uses them as a backyard, but it's technically a secondary front yard because it goes, you know, a couple hundred feet all the way back to the next road. Any questions?
And there's a, this is a dog containment.
Yeah, it's, yep, they got, they're new, moving in, so they got dogs coming with them.
Any other questions from the board?
So the variance is required just because of the secondary frontage and not the setbacks per se, yeah, okay.
So I'll open the public hearing, anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll start with the permission request first. I move for the motion to be approved in regards to the appeal at 5080 Two More Road for the accessory structure of a dog containment fence. I move that the request be approved as submitted, based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of such a necessary structure is appropriate for the neighborhood, you know, most neighbors have dogs and they have containment fence, fences. In regard to the dimensional variance at the same address for the dog containment fence in the secondary front yard, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because when you have a dog, without a dog fence, it would prevent the reasonable enjoyment of the dog and keeping it contained. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, these are very large lots that are very well screened. The unique circumstances of the property because it has two frontages, so that is definitely unique, and this is not self-created. If approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. And at this time, since the fence is four feet and it's going to be black aluminum and it's on a very screened lot, I'm not necessarily thinking to add additional evergreens to screen the fence from view.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling item 18, 325 Barron. State your name and address, any need for the variance.
David Shreagan, 3325 Barron Drive, representing the homeowner, Mokbal Shadid. We are requesting a variance to move the air conditioning equipment which was originally proposed to be at the rear lot, which actually caused some issues too because we have low windows, the ACs would have been right in view of the windows. Now they have added a generator and a pool, so we're requesting to move the ACs along with the generator and pool equipment on the left side of the house, which actually has the gas meter and electric as well, and we plan on screening that with Arberites.
Okay, any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing, is anyone like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion if there's.
Thank you so much.
No questions here, okay. So in regard to the appeal at 3325 Barron Drive for the dimensional variance, I move the, the variance be approved as requested, based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the, how the windows are placed in the back of the home and also the hookup for the electric. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it will be fully screened and is some distance away from neighboring properties. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given the many windows in the back of the home and the electric hookup, this is not self-created due to those reasons as stated. All applications for this should be made within one year and have to be obtained prior to installation, and all of this equipment will have to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens.
Okay.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item 19, 7415 Wing Lake Road.
Good evening, my name is John Kennedy, I reside at 7415 Wing Lake Road. I am seeking approval for a 12 by 14 foot gazebo for our backyard, which has a poured concrete foundation. It's a prefabbed unit from Costco, which would be professionally installed.
Thanks so much, any questions from the board?
I'm not so sure, what kind of trees do you have around your property line? I see you've got some.
There's actually quite a bit, so the view there to the east, which is the closest to the gazebo, has greenery to our neighbors there, and to the north, the builder has put in large trees. I would be more than happy to add more greenery to my property if that would help the council feel more comfortable with this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, so would you say with the trees you have now, it is fully screened or no?
Yes, it is.
So I will open the public hearing for this item, is anyone that would like to speak on it? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion. With regard to the appeal at 7415 Wing Lake Road for the permission request, I move that it be approved, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 because the use of this structure is harmonious to the neighborhood. The application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and have to be obtained prior to construction, and I am going to add that if, for whatever reason, the plantings that you have now are not sufficient to fully shield it, that you add additional evergreens so that it is shielded 12 months out of the year.
Absolutely.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling item 20, 3965 Adams. State your name and address, please.
Hello, good evening, my name is Sarush Farzan, I'm the owner at 3965 North Adams Road. So I'd like to seek your approval for, for an existing six foot fence. So I replaced a four foot tall ranch-style fence that had fallen in a state of disrepair, and this, this fence covers my backyard. Due to the location of my property, I have direct view to Adams Road, and, and my, my back porch pretty much offers no privacy. If I'm sitting on my back porch, it feels like I'm, I'm sitting in the middle of Adams. So as far as the fence construction goes, it is placed a couple of inches inside my property from, from where the old fence was, and then I got the letter from the city that, you know, my fence was in violation, I stopped the process, but ultimately the fence will be painted, or stained rather, the same color as the brick of the house.
Okay. So that, that road there is a private road, correct? That's not a.
Correct, that's, that's a private road, and I have a couple of.
Leads back to another house.
I, I had submitted some aerial, sorry, what was your question?
That, that road leads to another house that's.
Correct.
Yep.
So this is a private driveway and it's the access to this house at the end of the driveway.
Okay.
I, I contacted neighbor here and the neighbors here for, you know, whether they had any objections to the installation of the fence, and I didn't get any objections from them.
What about the one at the.
In the corner.
End there, in the corner?
This one?
Yeah.
They have no, they're not an adjacent neighbor, they have no, even from their home, they have no view to my.
But they have to drive by your house to get to their house.
That's correct.
So did you not talk to them, or have you not heard from them?
I did not talk to them.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing for this item, does anyone like to speak on it? Close the public hearing. So we had a lot of discussion about fences this evening, so I think we have a good context to look at this, so there's a lot of wood that we're seeing in the picture.
Right.
Almost has, it almost looks like a, I don't know. Stockade or Fort, I was going to say Fort. Because that's, that's just a lot of wood, and, you know, I think you kind of heard earlier in the evening is we're not likely to accept that kind of case, based on the, the visual impact and the height of it, it's, it's a, you know, solid wood fence, you know, typically we like the ones you can see through or whatever, so, I don't know, everybody on the board here, but that, that just is a very imposing structure. Is, is your main goal here, you're, you're trying to have privacy from Adams, is that it?
Both Adams and Waddles, because where my house is located, I, you know, it's like I'm right on Adams, there, there's no privacy in my backyard at all.
And you, and what, what material was the four foot fence?
It was wood as well.
It was the same, same as this one here?
No, it, it didn't have vertical pickets, it was a, my contractor called it a cowboy style fence, so there were vertical pickets with, with stringers going horizontally.
Right, so that's more of a, gotcha. Split rail fence or?
Yeah, split rail, yeah, that's what it's called.
Okay, yeah, so that would be less dramatic in its visual impact.
Correct, but that didn't offer any privacy.
Yeah.
Yes, so we understand that, you're, you're on a private road there.
Yeah.
And you're right on the property line, so you're screening that, right, you can't.
Tough, yeah.
Because the other thing we could go is with, with screening, but you'd have to move the fence off the property line, so if you wanted the.
So, so I tried, before I replaced the fence, I tried planting evergreens there. The issue is the, the base they used for the asphalt driveway is so thick that roots don't really penetrate, and in addition to that, the neighbor who uses that driveway to get to their house salts the driveway so heavily that it kills everything that's there, so I have a patch of dead grass on my property line. So I would be, I would be okay planting evergreens, maybe some vines to go over the fence and, and cover it, but it will likely not survive the winter due to how much salt is poured on that driveway.
Now you mentioned you were going to stain this, the fence as well, correct?
Correct. So the, the reason I didn't stain the fence initially is because it's pressure-treated material and it needs to dry before it could accept stain, and my goal was to stain it the same color as the brick of the house, so it, it blends in, but if I need to paint it or stain it a different color.
So what would you, what color would you describe that as, that you're planting? Because like the brick has a couple different, you know, there's a lighter color, there's more reddish, so what are you?
Right, so the bulk of the brick is that brown color.
Okay.
And I was planning to stain it that brown color, so it's a cohesive look. Furthermore, there are, there are multiple homes within, you know, five minute walk of my house with very similar fences that are visible from the street.
Do you know if they're six feet high? I'm struggling with the height of the fence, I mean, I understand you're on Adams, we occasionally, you know, those on a busy street, but.
Yes.
This is his backyard and even.
And this isn't actually on Adams, this is the private, private rain, you have the, you know, neighbor that did give us a water.
This is affecting three neighbors.
Called the prison barricade, so it's not.
So the other ones in your neighborhood, are they?
Yes, I have pictures, I'm not sure why they're not on this presentation, but I have pictures in the information packet that I submitted.
Again, as I said at the start, we look at each case separately and the facts in front of us, I'm just looking at the visual impact of the fence on the private road and the two people that live next to it. And it really typically. And it really typically, a fence of that material and that height, I can't remember being...
And darker.
Approved unless maybe it's on...
Even darker.
Yeah. Even darker, that's a big fence, so...
I mean, in this case, I'm more in favor of solid evergreen screenings than pink color.
But the problem is, if it's not realistic, I mean, you can, you know, require screening all day, but if the environment is not suitable, then...
Well, they have to pull your fence in to fit a buffer strip.
So could we find something less than six feet, like...
So actually, the fence closer to my house...
Four and a half?
It is right around five feet nominally from where my, where the driveway is. The driver slopes and does this. I could mimic the slope of the driveway and have a five-foot-tall fence, but the top of it would be wavy. So in the interest of having something that's aesthetically pleasing to the eye, I kept the very end of the fence at six feet and kept the top flat. So the height of the fence tapers down to about, you know, just shy of five feet as it gets closer to those gates that you see on the right side of the picture.
I mean, do you have the ability to reduce the size of this fence? Is that possible?
Reduce the height of it?
Yes. Is the construction of it, is that possible? I don't know what the supporting...
It is, it is not impossible. But once I do, you know, if I reduce the height of it, especially closer to the house, I will have zero privacy from my patio.
Well, you're going to have, let's say it's five feet, you're going to have more privacy than you had before with a split-rail fence.
So...
Trying to find a compromise here.
It is...
I don't think you're going to be able to get this fence. I'm just, I could draw a poll here, but I think this is a very hard thing for us to approve.
Well, the fence goes all the way around, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so is the concern just along this private drive?
It's on two sides? Not on the back?
Yeah.
Right.
Because on the sides, it's not to the rear.
Okay.
That would help, you're right. Yeah, I would say for me it is, biggest.
So if I have to cut a foot from top of the fence, you know, if that is absolutely a last resort, I would favor a shorter fence than no fence at all.
Yeah, well, that's again, we're trying to help you, right? We're here to make exceptions to the ordinance and work with people, so that's where we're having this discussion.
So the side of the fence that's closer to the house is already around just under five feet. So if I keep that, if I could keep that minimum and trim the rest of the fence so it's not such a tall structure, I would still have privacy on my patio. And, you know, the other portion of the fence would be shorter, so it's more aesthetically pleasing to the neighbor who lives at the end of the drive.
Okay, that's helpful. And then you could stain it a dark color?
I will absolutely stain it for longevity and durability of the fence, yes.
And so what color would that be? What are you...
Same color as the darker brick of the house, because that's the predominant color. But if the zoning board has another request pertaining to the color of the fence, I'm absolutely willing to do that. I could also try, like, vines, but, you know, due to how that driveway is maintained, the vines are not going to survive the winter.
No, you'd have to have like a, I don't know, a flower box or something that you just sort of threw over in the summer and...
Which I can do that as well.
Okay. So we have all kinds of different suggestions.
So in the photo we're looking at here, are you saying you're willing to come some length here and then drop down to four feet along the rest of that driveway?
So where the hood of that white car is, right there, the fence is just under five feet. It's like, you know, my chest level. So I can, I can keep that height. Can I have the laser for you, please? So maybe from this point and beyond, I could come down a little bit.
I think we're just going to, we're going to give you a height that you have to stay under.
Okay, I'm not understanding this.
Yeah.
There are six-foot panels.
Correct.
Correct? So there's six-foot panels. If you put them on the ground, they're all going to be six-foot high.
No, 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 no.
I don't understand how you're saying one is only five feet tall, huh?
Can you see this, can you see this curvature here?
Yeah, but the panel's still six-foot high.
No.
And I think because he says he sits lower.
The picket was trimmed.
Is it, you're saying because it sits lower because of the topography of the driveway?
Still six feet.
Yeah, the top is flush. It's still six feet from the ground.
And it gets cut, you know...
No, it's not six feet from the ground.
So what did you do?
Cut them off?
Some of the panels are shorter than the other?
Yes, the pickets were trimmed on the bottom.
Oh, you cut them off?
They're trimmed on the bottom. They're trimmed on the bottom.
Okay, all right.
So that it's five feet at one end and it gets bigger. But the top is the issue, to me.
In my mind, the issue is it's butts up to the row.
Private road, yeah.
It should have been pushed back.
Yes.
If you pushed it back and screened it...
Lot easier.
Right.
You could push it back enough where it was safe to actually plant screening.
Exactly. And then you don't really care about the height.
Then you can...
Just that one side.
We could do that, too.
That's just...
The other side is not affected by salt.
Well, on the other side, the people are not objecting to it.
So I think he's offered, at least on the private drive side, to reduce it to five feet?
But, I guess...
No, he says it's five feet now. I think it has to come down to four feet.
No, the...
Okay.
Isn't that our ordinance?
A portion of it is five feet.
Well, we can, we're making the motion here, so I'm okay with four feet on the side of the private drive, and then what about the rest of it? We let it...
Chair, is there a public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is anybody here?
There wasn't anybody that said anything, but I opened it.
Did we?
We did, yeah.
I thought we were still talking.
Oh, okay. No, I thought I brought it back.
I think he opened it.
I did. I mean, I can do it again.
Yeah, do it again.
So is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
No, we're good. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure we... You know, we've had so many fences, they're all...
Yeah.
My concern is that this is such a far cry from our...
What we typically approve, but I'm saying...
There's so many issues, though. I mean, it's the height, it's the material, it's the density, it's the lack of ability to hide it. Even if you stain it, then you've got to maintain it, and I can speak in experience as a homeowner, that's a big pain in the butt.
And it's a lot of offense to me.
You've got to stay on that all the time, or you'll have complaints that it looks crummy because you're not keeping it up.
Right, that's true.
So maintenance of it wouldn't be an issue because the previous fence was actually, and the fence that the neighbor has, the one at the end of the drive, is original to the, to the house, and it's not in good shape. So this is new fence. I keep up with the maintenance of it, so I have purchased, you know, UV-resistant stain for it, stain and sealer, so it's not something that's going to fall into a state of disrepair after just a few months.
Then a couple of years.
Welcome to Michigan.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's one of the reasons why we have, especially with wood fences like this, required the screening, because we know they do deteriorate over time, yet the screening grows and obscures that. So I'm personally struggling with this because I want to push it back.
You, along the private road?
I want to push it back along the private road and require screening.
Have it screening, yeah.
Do you do that? A world of difference with screening on there.
It's a lot easier than cutting it all down, and it's not, it's still going to look, I don't care if it's four feet or five feet or six feet, it's going to look the same along that private road.
Right.
Because if you were to move it in and screen it all the way around, you can have the six feet, you have the privacy.
You could have the six feet, you have the privacy, and you just...
Okay.
You found the...
No, I understand. So you want me to push it back a couple of feet just to have enough space to...
Probably push it back five feet.
To have room to plant trees.
Yeah, so...
Push it in five feet along the side.
So that the salt and everything doesn't impact the vegetation.
You probably have to move it in like six feet.
Six feet. Six feet.
So you could still use your fence, you'd just have to move it one second.
You'd have all the privacy you want.
And you'd have your privacy, but it would be screened and it would have an entirely different appearance.
The screening will really help.
This is the thing, because in Bloomfield, we don't really allow privacy fences, and then if we have them, then we require screening because we don't want neighbors to have to look at a high fence.
Right.
And not see trees or, you know, open space. So that's really why we're suggesting...
Any fence like that is usually totally blocked.
Okay, and if I, if I had to, you know, shorten the height of the fence, what would the limit be? I'm just trying to...
See what's better.
Yeah, balance my, because it is, it is quite a bit of work to have to move the fence back a few feet if I have to... Because I think...
We may be at the point where there's somebody who just has to make a random motion and see what passes and what doesn't.
Right.
Well, I'm going to say, I'm leaning with Carol that moving it back gives you the opportunity at whatever height...
Yeah, that's the way I feel.
For greenery, like the township.
I think you're right.
I don't think reducing the height is going to significantly change the appearance.
Right. All right, then make that motion. I think there's support for that.
Okay, Glenn. In regards to the appeal...
We've well debated this and analyzed it.
3965 Adams Road. I move to approve a divensial variance for the six-foot-high fence that exists without benefit of previous review, as long as it is moved five feet off the property line in order to provide enough evergreen year-round screening.
Is there, I apologize.
Sorry, I do have to finish. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because strict compliance with the letter of the ordinance would be undue burdensen. It is a unique lot with two nearby busy streets, and it is not self-created due to a private drive along the side. And those are the unique circumstances of the property, but they are also the ones that we need to protect the neighbor from. Should this motion be approved, all necessary permits must be pulled, actually, is it within two weeks?
It's five days.
Five days on a situation where it wasn't originally approved, and you must have that permit to commence work.
And the existing fence is going to have to be moved within 30 days of approval.
Okay, 30 days of moving the portion that adjusts, that butts the neighbor's street.
And then, did you mention staining? Is staining in your motion?
Yes.
Yes, a final stain finish must be on, well, on the outside of this fence at the very least, and screening along the private drive.
Can I ask a question? Instead of five feet...
Hold on, is there a deadline on the staining? Do we have to, do I give...
I'm willing to let the staining go with the weather. You know, it's, you do have to let the womanize, come down and get some sample stains.
Right, so, but I think we ought to, shouldn't we put a deadline on that?
You can define the staining, it'd be like within a year.
90 days.
Yeah, I'd say 90 days, yeah.
90 days.
Okay. So wait a minute. So we have a motion.
Support.
And we have support. Any discussion?
Uh...
Hold on. We're not done.
Any...
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have a passed motion. What is your question about?
Could the five, sorry, could the five-foot distance be reduced to three feet?
No.
No.
I don't think it'll accomplish the difficulties you mentioned.
And it's in your best interest. If you're going to screen it, and you, you're the one that said, there's salt and everything, we don't, we don't want to have anything that you plant die.
You want to push it back far enough, that's going to survive.
Because it will have to be screened continuously. If your plants die, we're going to be back out there telling you to replace it. So you want to have sufficient area for them to live.
Okay.
Okay.
So do you understand what you have to do?
Yes.
Okay.
The fence needs to be removed, moved back five feet.
And evergreen planting.
Evergreen planting.
They have to, they have to block the view of it, and you have to stain it in 90 days.
Sure.
I think you ended up with a really good motion.
You're going to have a lot of privacy.
Yes.
All right. One, just so we are clear, there is a, I called the utility company, and there's a, there's a utility pole that has access through my property. For that, I added a nine-foot gate, so, you know, if they ever had to service it, they could go in with their telehandler, telehandler and equipment and whatnot. How do I cover that gate for their access? Because I don't want to block them out of my property if they had to ever service that pole.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Where is it going to be located?
I don't think I...
It's in the front, isn't it? The gate is part of his fence, and so as long as it complies, his point is, as far as landscaping, he won't be able to put landscaping in front of it.
Oh, I see.
Because the gates have to be accessible. So there will be a segment that won't have any evergreen screening.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
We're good with that. I mean, that's a...
Fact of life.
Like any easement.
Right.
All right, thank you for your time today. Good luck. On to the next item. Item 20-540...
Hello, everybody. My name is Gary Ellis. I live at 2540 West Hickory Grove. I'm looking for approval to keep a shed that I want to have in the backyard, you know. I do apologize for any drama that I might have caused for having the shed delivered prior to this. It turns out that...
You know, on the drama meter, that's not off the charts for us, so that's okay.
What happened was, it turns out that companies don't really want to deliver a shed that they didn't build. And I found the perfect shed at Lowe's that, you know, they built for a display, and I wanted that shed. So I thought I was on June's...
Hey, that's okay. Just tell us about the shed. So it's already delivered, it's there, no problem. Just tell us about where you're going to put it and how you're going to screen it.
In the backyard.
Okay.
16 feet, one side of the other. It's there, it looks really good, and I haven't even planted the evergreens yet.
Okay.
I checked with all the neighbors before. I tried to reschedule.
Yeah, so you're not, you don't need a dimensional variance. It's inside the setbacks, and you're going to screen it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Open the public hearing. Anyone wants to speak? Close the public hearing, back to the board for motion.
I got this.
And thank you for your very contrite presentation.
Yes, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the permission request in regards to the appeal at 2540 West Hickory Grove for the accessory structure of a shed that has been delivered. No, just kidding. I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of such a accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood as well as harmonious because there is plan to screen the shed as well, and it is within the setbacks. And with that said, if approved, the motion also includes all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And again, evergreens are required to screen the shed from public view.
Support.
So I have a motion to support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Good luck with your shed. Calling the next item, item twenty-two, three-six, three-seven, Walbury.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christian Growth, and I'm the homeowner at 3637 Walbury Drive.
You heard our last one, right?
Yes.
You learned a lot, I bet.
I hope that I can present a few facts that will potentially sway you. So I recently purchased this home, and my property backs Square Road. And the speed limit there is, you know, thirty miles an hour, but a lot of people, I found out, really speed a lot. So there is a fairly significant amount of road noise, there's light pollution. And then also, my fiancee, the main reason that we're actually excited to move to Bloomfield is she really wants to adopt our friend's dog, and it is absolutely ginormous. This is the dog next to a horse. It is a Great Dane. They can pretty easily.
I thought it was a horse. Oh, it's a horse.
Oh, no, this is the dog.
I was gonna say, that's a horse, that's not a dog.
I'm not looking to keep a horse. And so these dogs can pretty easily jump five feet plus. I have a lot of material. They'll say they suggest a full wooden fence that is hopefully six foot tall.
Will you screen this fence for us?
I would like to, but there is some challenge. I was actually hoping to have arborvitae along the back, but because I have rather tall trees, you can see it on the side of Squirrel, if I may borrow the pointer. I think, I was advised by a few landscapers that really, most trees, evergreen, arborvitae, are not gonna grow because there are already so many trees. So I think screening, it is actually partially screened. I did submit some views from the street also. I'm not sure if those are presented in that package, but you'll see that there is a fair amount of greenery that will be shielding this fence as is. I would also like to mention that my HOA gave me a letter of support. My neighbor to the north gave me a letter of support, and my neighbor to the south gave me a letter of support that I have with me this evening. I would be happy to share. The main thing I also wanna say is that this fence is solely going to Square Road. I already have a pool. They must have had an exception previously, but it's already taller than a normal fence would be, I guess. It's taller than four feet.
The fence around the pool, you mean?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, yeah. So I'm solely looking to shield on Square Road where no neighbor is actually facing, no home is facing this fence. There's no direct sightline to this fence from any homeowner.
And this is another wood, this is wood material?
This is a wooden, correct. And you can see there, it is a very thickly, it is a thick kind of brush greenery area where you come up on Square Road, and you can see to the right, here is, there's a house hidden behind there, but there's no direct sightline at all to where I would propose this fence to be. Oh, yeah, that is a nice view. There's a really poor-conditioned chain link fence currently, but you can see, this is actually the one part where it's the most open. Everywhere else, there's even more screening than in this particular location that's pictured.
Do you have some idea of the distance from the paved portion of the road to your chain link fence?
Yeah, I would guess that it's in excess of eight to ten feet, I would say, pretty easily. That is a winter photo that I submitted there, yeah. So, but I would say at least eight feet, if not ten.
Pretty open in the winter.
From the edge of the road to the current fence?
From the pavement to the fence, I would say at least ten, yeah. Where the current fence sits, and my goal was to place it in the same positioning as the current fence.
See, in the winter, it's a lot more visible. That's the issue.
Right.
So you're close to the southern entrance onto Walbury, right?
That is correct. And if you notice here, these trees are the ones preventing me from really planting arborvitae. I had a couple of nurseries actually come out, and they said, "Look, we won't want your trees. We advise you not to install them. We feel that they're gonna die." And I really didn't wanna cut down any of the more mature trees because they're just beautiful. So I think there would still be, you know, the fence wouldn't be that visible.
How big is your lot?
It is one acre.
You got a Great Dane, one-acre lot.
And there's also a fair amount of, if you were to look to your right, so basically where I'm pointing to now is Hawthorne. And when people turn from Hawthorne onto Square Road heading north, there is a fairly significant amount of light, you know, pollution that happens, and that's one of the main exit points out of, you know, Hickory Heights, I guess, for lack of better wording. I do promise also, if you were to approve this, I could really maintain it very, very nicely. I have, I own some multifamily property. I have property maintenance people who work for me, you know, five days a week, so it would certainly be nicely maintained all the time.
And what color would it be?
I would be open to suggestions. Brown would be great.
Good helpful answer.
I think it would blend in very nicely.
Learning in the audience, I like that.
Well, you could break it up a little bit by planting a few things here and there. You may not be able to have a continuous screen, but you have some spots you could put in an evergreen here or there to sort of soften it, couldn't you?
If you saw the, like, I'm.
Some that wouldn't just be flat, something a little bit better? You know, we've had those before.
Those, go like that.
Yeah. You know, that hit like a jig jog, so then it's not just a.
But is it because of the roots of the other trees?
Yeah, it's, there is just so much vegetation. I'm not sure if we have a satellite image of it, but there's just a massive amount of vegetation. Actually, I wanted to put, I want to do what you're suggesting, but I've been told that it would not, they would likely not survive. There is maybe more vegetation than you're even picturing, certainly during the summertime. There's a lot of taller evergreens that are right against the lot line. So, yeah, you can see it now. I mean, there's just a significant amount of vegetation here. I don't know if you ever drive up Square Road, but it looks like it's all very mature trees and plants.
I think, you're talking a wood fence, and so what you're trying to prevent, you're giving me privacy, dog containment, light pollution, busy road traffic.
Yeah, and a little bit of noise too, to be, I mean, people really speed down Square Road, which I didn't realize when I was moving there. And it really freaked me out that the dog could potentially jump over the fence and get hit by a car. And if you, that part of Square Road, the hills, there's like two hills right there, so it'd be hard to see the dog, and it just worries me because we already know the dog. It's our friend's dog, and they're unfortunately unable to keep it. And it can jump pretty high, so I'm just worried that, you know, it could get out potentially, which I wanna really try to avoid, especially against Square Road.
You're gonna need a sturdy fence.
Yeah, yeah, this is true.
So if he's got the right color, I don't know, if it's dimensional, it's on Squirrel.
No neighbors can see it.
Yeah, I'm ready.
And the neighbors support it.
Alright.
I was gonna do that. Go ahead.
Okay, so with regard to the appeal at 3637 Walby Drive, I move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the home's location on Squirrel Road. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it's not gonna be visible to any of them. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location in the township, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. All necessary permits must be made within one year for this fence and should be obtained prior to installation. I'm not gonna require additional evergreen screening, but the finished side of the fence has to face the exterior.
And then staining?
Oh, and the staining, yes. So it has to be stained. Do you wanna put a timeline or?
Ninety days.
Okay, so stain it with ninety days of, yeah, stain with a dark color with the ninety days of installation.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion of this motion? It's a well-crafted, well-thought-out motion. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
We have one, so do you wanna do a roll call?
No.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so just here?
Yeah.
Alright.
Sorry.
So your request is granted.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Notwithstanding the former chair's objection. So calling the next item, twenty-three.
Hello, my name is Dan Quinn. I'm the landscape architect working with and appearing on behalf of the homeowner in this situation. We are requesting approval for a Jacuzzi hot tub located in the side yard. I'm requesting a dimensional variance is located twelve feet from the lot line instead of the required sixteen.
The hot tub is four feet high?
Yes.
Okay, and it's gonna sort of fit into that?
Right into that little note there.
You show with the pointer there, it's right in that sort of that, where that, okay, right in there, okay. It's really right on the side of the wall. Okay, any other questions?
So you can't really move it in then, if that's, you want it in that little corner?
Sorry?
I mean, so you can't move it closer so that it's not that large of an encroachment?
Correct.
Okay.
He's sort of predetermined.
Yeah.
The envelope. Any other questions?
Was this twelve feet off the side yard?
Yeah, I don't understand the scale of this drawing.
I don't understand.
Is it four feet?
No, so this is worded incorrectly in here. It says, "Encroaching twelve feet into their required sixteen." It's actually only encroaching four feet.
Okay, that's, okay, that's, yeah.
Okay, so the variance.
It's much better.
Much better.
And that, something tonight, much better than we thought. That patio below there sits, alright, sits approximately seven feet below.
Open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing. Now we have a much better request.
Okay.
That I think we can make a motion on.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, outstanding.
Okay, in regards to the appeal at 1028 Ardmore Drive for accessory, or for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The site is, seems to be very screened and not visible to the neighbor. It is harmonious with the neighborhood. I think that if approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. It doesn't appear to me that additional screening would be required unless there is some visibility on site that might require that to be screened twelve months out of the year.
Support. To address the variance.
Oh, dimensional.
That's not. It's the setback. Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, also for the, for the same address in regards to the appeal, for the setback, I think the setback is, I'm sorry.
Mitchell variance?
Mitchell variance of four feet. With the variance be approved as requested based on information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the.
Topography.
Topography of the side yard setback. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors because it's not visible from the neighbors. Unique circumstances with the property because of the side yard setback, and this is not self-created. If approved, the motion must include application for unnecessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
The home stretch, item twenty-four, three, four, five, Dalebrook Lane. We have someone running to the podium. Wow.
I didn't know I have to talk today, but we'll do it.
You still got it at the end of the evening, that's amazing.
Yeah, my name is Roland Chalhoub, representing the homeowner. We are asking for five-feet variance to build deck in his backyard. The deck proposed is only twelve feet, but I think it doesn't have enough.
You have a small backyard, so in a small backyard, you need to encroach in the rear yard setback.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
From the public hearing?
Roland.
You're a great role model. If you could state your name and address?
Mike Smith, from Architectural Control Committee of Westchester Village Homeowners Association, living at 3571 Berkshire Drive. They, the homeowner has not presented any application to the homeowners' association. He has been in this home, it's a new home, probably a year and a half old at the most. Since he moved in, he did put in a generator. And he did go through the homeowners' association at that time and provide us with the proper documentation. So he knows the procedure and the protocol. But for this, there was, he has provided no documentation, no application, no nothing. We knew absolutely nothing about it until we received the letter from the township that this was being presented at this evening's meeting. So I would ask that this be postponed for a month or two and to give them time to give us an application, for our committee to review it. When I got this letter from the township about this evening and this project, I called this Mr. Wing, I believe is how you pronounce it, because we have a directory, and his phone number was listed in there. So I did call him, and he called me back. And he happened to be out of the country. I can't remember what country he said he was in, but he was out of the country and would not be back for a period of time. And I explained to him what the problem was, and that we needed to get the information before this meeting. And I said, "The likelihood of that happening in six days is not very great." He did have someone, a female, from the contractor's company, call me. And I told her what documentation we needed, and she said they would get back in touch with me. I've heard nothing since that time. So I would ask that this be postponed for a minimum of one month, maybe two months, since he's out of the country, to give them a chance to get documentation and an application to us so we can review this.
Okay. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing. Do you wanna respond to that? Do you have any? You don't know anything?
Just to be straight and honest, we didn't know we have to get association approval before this hearing. But we still can apply for association after that. I don't know if we should postpone this for one or two months. Can apply for association like in the next couple of days, if this is okay? I don't know.
So I guess it's up to the board here. So this is a minimal encroachment into the setback.
Wait for association approval before you build it. I don't know what else to say. I think the city asked us for association before.
How do people feel about it?
I would personally not be inclined to table it because, first of all, it's July, okay? This is a deck that you wanna use during the summer. And although we do consider the association comments.
Not controlling.
They don't control our decisions, so, you know, it's unfortunate that he didn't know to apply to you or he failed to apply to you, but I would rather, well, but I don't wanna, I don't feel that we need to table this over another month.
I agree. When I look at this lot, it's a very narrow rear yard. There's very few things he can do.
Exactly.
This twelve feet is relatively modest. It's not a huge deck.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, we can see from the photographs, it's gonna be in line with the height that it is. I'm not sure there's a lot of surprises that the association is going to find from this.
Right.
And I think it's very relatively modest, and there's nowhere else it could be. I'm not sure there's input that the association would, you know, change the location of it, or.
I mean, with the way the lot is shaped and where the house exists.
Yeah, he's got a small backyard.
It's a very limited area, and it's not a large deck that's being proposed.
They're asking for a very modest amount for what we see.
No, it's just a deck.
Yeah.
So with that, is someone ready to make a motion? Courageous motion?
I'll make a courageous.
Courageous. Thank you.
Here we go.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 3345 Dalebrook Lane for the proposed deck encroaching into the rear yard setback. I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without such a deck size of what's being proposed, which is not very extensive, would prevent the reasonable use of the property, particularly outdoor use. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it's a deck. It's not something that can be seen, it doesn't have strict view. The unique circumstances of the property, the existing lot size really puts a lot of limitations on what you can do with the property, and because of that, it is not self-created. So the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing construction.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling the last. Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling the last item for tonight's meeting, the caboose, item number 25, 2527 Telegraph.
Good evening, my name is Richie Eto. I'm the property owner at 2527 Telegraph. And Brian is with Sinorama, and he represents SVS Vision. So, the building has been vacant for almost two years now since the dry cleaning operation went out of business and T-Mobile was bought out by somebody that, or Sprint was, T-Mobile bought Sprint and they had another store close by. They couldn't support two, so were trying to re-tenant the building. So, many years ago, maybe ten years ago, we sought approval and received from this board, the zoning board of appeals, the approval for a monument sign. And the idea is that although the township allows either one or the other a wall sign or a monument sign, our goal is to have multiple tenants in the building now that we're dividing it up for new tenants. And that each time a tenant comes forth, they could have a slot on the monument sign that's already been approved as well as a, as well as a wall sign. In this case, obviously, the wall signs are, the size of the wall signs are determined by the square footage or the linear footage. So, in this case, SVS is seeking approval for two wall signs. However, the sum of the two equals what one would have been in the square footage-wise, but because of the corner and the unique...
Well, one faces Square Lake.
One face Square Lake, one face...
Telegraph, busy road, you need visibility on both.
And honestly, this, to me, is a very difficult piece of property.
You can't even...
Very difficult. And I can understand why you're coming in asking for some additional signage, because it's tough to see, it's tough to get in and out of.
The grade's different.
Yeah.
And not only that, we have a telegraph address, but no telegraph access other than through an easement with 2525, our next-door neighbor. So, we respectfully request this variance and we'll come back each time there's a tenant, unless you wanna tell us, we could have a wall sign in the monument sign for the other future tenants.
So, I'm not sure I can ask this correctly, but when I discussed this with the staff, I said make sure landscaping is part of the motion for ground sign. So, do you understand that requirement?
I understand that there's landscaping, but the, the ground sign also has a maximum height, so the first panel is within inches of the ground. So, any landscaping would basically be, be ground cover, otherwise you'd be covering part of the sign. The township desires not to wish to, to lift the sign up. So, we'll, we'll provide whatever is required as long as it doesn't block the sign.
So, is that...
The ground sign, yes, the ground cover would be acceptable.
Okay.
Yes, there'd be some vegetation.
But we need to put that in our motion.
It has to be something, yes.
So, that, that needs to be incorporated in to the courageous member that makes the motion.
So, tonight, just to be clear, the, the ground sign's been approved many years ago. We'll upgrade the landscaping, and SVS is requesting the wall sign. And in this case, the, the square footage that's allowed will be split into two.
Okay.
So, the sum of the two signs equals the allowable square footage for that space.
Yeah, that's, yep. And again, that's why we're happy to give you the variance.
Okay.
So, who would like to bring us home with the last motion? Bring the crowd to their feet, get a standing ovation.
Okay, I'll give it a try.
All right.
I'm just looking for...
You can do it.
Come on.
Sort of weird the way it's written, isn't it?
It is. It's, it's a bit tricky.
All right, in the, it's a dimensional variance, correct?
Yep, a couple, yep. Secondary signage and logos exceeding five percent of the sign area.
There we go, thank you. In regard to the appeal at 2527 South Telegraph Road for the dimensional variance for two signs, I move the variance be approved as requested and submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because, obviously, the unique condition of the lot, the, where the driveways are a different grade, the high speed of the traffic, the, really, the safety of the general public requires these, this kind of configuration of the signs to have one on the side. And it is not self-created due to the condition of the lot. Do I need to mention the percentages or just tie it to the drawings?
Tie it to the drawings.
All right. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits received before, prior to installation.
Support.
Let, let the landscaping and the...
Oh, yes. Landscaping around the base of the, of the ground sign to the extent that you can.
So, as long as it does not block the sign.
And support again.
So, we have motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Support? All those in favor?
Courageous motion.
All right, we're done.